All right, good afternoon or evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today we have a special meeting, and so we're here for City of Council, Collegse Community Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency, Collegsego Financing Authority Special Meeting, September 5th, 2013. At approximately 5:34, we are beginning, a little late. Let's please begin with the call to order and attendance. Looking on both sides, the only person that is absent, but he's coming through the door, and that is Councilman Kim. So we will have a total amount of council people here in a quorum. Okay. Here we go, Councilman Kim. Please, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And, you know, I, Nick Savini, please lead it, officer.
Let me begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We also have on the agenda, oh, the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved, sir.
Second. Is there a second to approve the agenda?
I don't have an agenda.
You don't have this? We need, it's in the, the actual, the actual, yes, sir. That's it, you got it.
I don't see it.
Should be, sir.
Right there, big as Dallas.
No, he doesn't.
Should be this page, right here.
Secret? No.
Just one item.
He does not have it, but it's the item to approve the budget.
Just this item?
But he should have it.
For the...
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, let's move forward then.
I have some questions about the agenda.
No, what we're doing right now is approval of the agenda?
Yeah, discussion, because I was informed to just special meeting for the two items. One is the budget and the discussion about the JPI letter.
Hmm, Councilman Kim, as far as I know, and I think everybody else here, we...
The emails were when they're asking about the possibility to come to special meeting. They were saying that two things are going to be discussed today.
I was not aware of that or informed, just about the budget, but City Manager?
Well, no, I was not under the impression, but I'm looking at the clerks here. Mr. Mayor, I recall distinctly that you had adjourned the meeting to this meeting, and this is a continuance of Tuesday's meeting, so that's why it could not be placed on the agenda as, this was a continuous of the Tuesday meeting we had.
This is special.
No, Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday...
Tuesday was not adjourned to today?
No, this is special meeting.
This is a special meeting.
Well, I, I, who moved?
You are right.
I made it first.
I'll second.
Mr. Moreno seconded already.
On the approval of this agenda.
Right.
Please vote. Okay, before I continue with public comments, if there are any, as mayor, each and every one of us have had a briefing, you had the, you had the opportunity to have a briefing. During the briefing, that was the proper time to ask the questions with City Manager or related staff and to dive into the, the budget. I see this meeting as, when it comes our turn, as just a moment to comment on the budget. This is not a meeting to take up a whole lot of time with a lot of questions, no. That should be done in the briefing. Each and every councilperson will have a three-minute opportunity to just give your comment about the budget, how you like it, how you don't like it, and that's it, and we're here to vote on it. So...
This is communist.
And again, council, for various reasons, we are being scrutinized.
This is...
We're under the microscope. Excuse me, Councilman Kim, I'm speaking. And I believe it's important to stress our decorum. Councilwoman Hurtado is absolutely right. We need to have the respect for each other, be professional, no, no, no putting out any personal intentions. Leave that in the backyard, whatever, back, whatever, but it's not out here in public. We are being scrutinized. We can do it, we need to show our best foot forward. What does that mean? That we are courteous with each other, respectful, we don't interrupt, we don't raise our voices, there's no need to, and we all have the right to speak, and I will continue to emphasize on that, and I know that I have my hands full, but I need your cooperation, and I want to thank you, City Council. So let me move on with the announcements in public appearance. That's correct. For the public, we're going right down the agenda, Councilman Kim, not to exceed three minutes. This is the time for the public to address the council on any item appearing on this special meeting agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of City Council. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Please direct your questions and comments to the City Council. Democracy is in action. Are there any public comments? I do not have any slips, but you have that opportunity. Are there any public comments on today's special meeting? No, there is not. Now we will move on to one business item. Discussion and/or action on approval of the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2013-14 final annual operating budget for the City of Callexico. This is the end of the road. Going back, we have plenty of time to confer with our staff about items in the budget. We've had the briefing. Again, reiterating, each councilperson will be allowed three minutes. I will now be rude and cut you off. Please be respectful of that. This is not an inquiry. Give your comments, and then once we're through, all of us, we will vote, and we will be out of here. So, Councilman Kim, would you like to begin? Your comments on our budget for the year 2013-14, sir.
First of all, this is a communist meeting. We are not communist. The hour, you said, Mr. Hart, you said we are scrutinized because you don't want to be responsible. You tried to dictate the meeting. Even the agenda itself, discussion, you make...
Off of the question, point of order, Mr. Mayor. He is not addressing the item.
No, 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 he is addressing the...
Here we go, ladies and, stop, John. Councilman Kim, keep your temper down. Please address. I'm just trying to be professional and control the meeting. Say your comments.
Looks like we're not professional.
But, sir, sir, we're going, will you, will you address the, the...
I'm not going to be able to do it in three minutes. That's illegal. I have been representing it. I'm representing the community and not you.
I do too, sir. Keep, keep, keep your motions in check, go ahead.
No, I'm not, I'm not motion. I just need to raise the voice, because that way you guys understand.
We're right here, sir, we don't need to hear.
When I talk slowly, you guys doesn't understand.
Mr. Kim, why are you so argumentive? Will you please give your comments or questions on the budget?
Because you tried to dictate in the meeting.
I'm the mayor, sir, it's my responsibility.
Yes, the mayor is not dictating.
All right, I'm going to stop.
Mayor has to have given ample time to communities, okay? The, this is discussion time. The mayor wants the statement. This is the way we're causing the problem. We are representing the community.
Point of order again, Mr. Mayor.
We are representing the community.
Point of order, this has nothing to do with...
This is another way to censure me by the three council members.
Councilman Kim, point of order, according to Robert Rules...
It's not point of order.
According to Robert Rules of Order means that the discussion ends and we vote.
Oh, yeah, okay. Lawyers said we not follow the Robinson rules orders.
Okay, Robinson rules.
Now you say the Robinson rules.
Mr. Kim.
So when you, when you have the convenience to pull the Robinson rules, when you don't need it, just throwing the Robinson rule out.
Councilman Kim, calm down. Point of order, according to Robert Rules, is when someone at the council feels that the discussion is irrelevant. No disrespect, calm down. And that takes, that is the president's motion over any other motion. So we're going to vote, right?
Well...
We're going to vote on point of order to stop, for you to stop discussing other things.
I won't stop. I won't stop. You guys still regardless, this is censure me. It is censuring, okay?
Sir, you are...
This is censuring.
I don't know how to deal with you, sir.
What I do, I want to do to the point of order.
He's being boisterous, I would call the chief of police.
Chief of police, our councilman here doesn't seem to want to respect the proper decorum. He doesn't want even respect the Robert Rules of Order. I want to hear what he has to say about the budget, but he wants to go off in other tangents.
Because you tried to limit three minutes. This is budget, one-year budget.
I'll be nice and give you three and a half. Go ahead, Councilman Kim.
You're joking.
Go ahead, sir, please.
This budget itself is illegal.
Unbelievable.
This budget itself is not completed. We don't have a budget for the last year. We don't have a report from the last year how much we spent it. We don't have an interim report for the last years. How we can make the decision without the last year? Yes, sir. We have a 10 million balance left over, and we have a lot of balance left over every year, and it's not in budget. And also, we don't know how much we left over last year. Every government, we have a balance, has to be show up to closing the books. It's not here. And our council, this right now, tries to say, but the three minutes each council member to approve this budget? This is wrong.
Thirty seconds are up.
This is wrong for us. It's, this is council, why the Callexico like this? Because this kind of budget is not going to help us. There's a lot of personal issues involving here, and then we just want a three minutes to finish it, and when I talking, and then I got interrupted, interrupted, and then even the...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Hart is waiting for me, pushing out from the waiting.
Point of order, Mayor. Point of order. We also want our part.
This is not enough time for us to make the decision. We supposed have to make the decision with the year...
Point of order, Mayor. I mean, how much do we have to tolerate?
Do we have to make the decision?
All right.
Use a gavel.
Yes, yes, we should not do this one easily. We doing the dealing for the community's part.
He just keeps talking.
Okay?
Kim, please, Councilman Kim.
Look at this, this is communist.
But you are unfair. We have allowed you to talk more. You are unfair.
No, no.
Now, maybe your questions can be answered, sir. Let's allow City Manager to give an overview, all right? I'm sorry, City Manager, I forgot to include that. Thank you, Councilwoman Hurtado. And maybe the overview will take care of your concerns. Sir, you have a right to be concerned, but we don't understand you.
Because you don't understand number.
No, no, it's not that. We don't understand, you have opportunity for briefings and to be informed. I don't understand why you want to use the council as a bully pope, or, I don't understand that, sir.
No, 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 you don't want to bully us.
Councilman, I mean, City Manager, would you like to give a brief interview?
You don't want to bullying us.
Will you be respectful and allow the City Manager to give a brief overview? I'm sorry.
No problem.
This is so upsetting.
I will provide you with an overview, and then I will go into a couple of items that I think are important to mention, and then we will certainly open it up for you to ask us any questions. I think it's important that we get this information onto the record. You have it before you, but any of the public, and certainly we're videotaping this, so we want to make sure we get it into, into the record. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I am pleased to present to you the City of Callexico's annual operating budget for fiscal year 2013-14. For the second year in a row, the all-important general fund budget is truly balanced in that current revenue is parallel current expenditures. The following pages show how we reached the balanced budget and how this overall budget represents the city's financial plan as communicated through council actions and direction over the past months. As we consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2013-14 operating budget, we cannot separate from the realities of what goes on at the state level or the federal level. We have many positive things to say about Callexico, but find ourselves looking over our shoulders still. Even after five years of extreme financial challenges, that the state level, that the state finds itself today with a multimillion-dollar deficit, ultimately, Callexico, like all other cities in California, will be required to give up more and face continued uncertainty. The Legislative Analyst Office, the LAO, recently forecasted that the state's budget condition over the next five years, and it shows that California's budget situation has improved. The state's economic recovery is starting to bring California to a promising moment. The possible end of a decade of acute lingering problems with the liquidation of the redevelopment agencies, which we are all too familiar with, while the pension reform is forcing unforeseen changes in the local and state workforce as retirements in the sector are up dramatically, and we've seen that through our colleagues in different areas, with different cities, unfortunately, going into bankruptcy. The state is implementing prison reform that is making many cities unsafe as they cope with the early release of inmates. While the state's fiscal condition has improved, there are many good reasons for the City of Callexico to adopt a cautious budgetary posture. After years of furloughs and conservative, I put Scrooge on here, but conservative spending mentality, the City Council now has the opportunity to build a budget for future years that give it more choices, more choices about how to build reserves in times of healthy revenue growth, prioritizing future spending, and pay off past debts. And what we're really saying there is that we've been through a rough time, we've been through, and we're not out of the woods by a long shot, but the recession has not assisted us in moving forward and growing our revenues. But we have, in doing so, in putting our budget into place, we have provided for more efficiency and more effective way of managing. This year's budget shows we have rid ourselves of approximately half of the structural deficit, which I will go into later, that exists this time last year. Furthermore, assuming steady economic growth and restraint in augmenting current program funding levels, there is a strong possibility of a small surplus within the next few years. And we will go into that later on too, where we are projecting, I believe, a $44,000 surplus, which in many minds is not a lot of money, and it isn't, but we could be looking at the other side of the equation, where we'd be looking at a deficit spending document. We are not. The city's ability to control costs will be challenged this fiscal year by many very expensive factors, such as upgrades to the city's aging communication systems, studies required for actual actuarial updates for the retiring medical health plan funding, a study to evaluate our current active employee healthcare plan, continuous aggressive replacement of worn-out equipment for police and public works, upgrades for fire facilities and equipment, adding a sergeant's position and filling two current vacant police officer positions, realigning department staffing to alleviate shortages, and a host of other initiatives that will make the city more efficient. The proposed budget includes funding that will be put to use in our effort to meet many of the council's goals, such as enhance public safety, increase transportation investments, support business development, invest in the future, and promote clean and usable parks. The funding for the above areas will primarily come from Measure H sales tax, grant funds for parks and public safety, and continuing support for Measure D transportation funds. In addition, an uptick in business development projects will provide support for increased sales tax and the property tax. There are other goals and objectives not mentioned here that are equally important that will be addressed during the year. During fiscal year 2012-2013, management continued the effort to downsize the overall city payroll costs, which exceeds $16 million, with $12 million of it in the general fund salaries and benefits section. The action has provided to be a major contributor towards reducing the structural deficit. However, we still have a structural deficit of a little over $1 million to consider. We must find a way to eliminate the remainder of the structural deficit, and I will talk more about that after this, after this briefing. As part of the 2013-14 annual operating budget report, the Callexico City Council is being asked to adopt a series of prudent measures to keep the city on track to full fiscal recovery within the next two to three years. To maintain the city's strong effort to achieve a secure fiscal footing, management and staff have continued stringent cost controls for all departments, prioritized most programs and services, held tight on lifting the hiring freeze, and sought funding from outside resources such as grants and contract, and contract experts who can bring significant value to the city's desire to expand key services. City management is asking the council to adopt a plan to reorganize the staff and departments into more efficient operations and be positioned to address the challenging economic environment in a faster mode. In the administrative area, there are more staff utilizing the fixed distribution of their time to allow for less time charges to the general fund and more to other funds where reimbursements are available. We'll talk a little more about that. Although the practice was available in past years, it has not, we have not taken full advantage of it, and we tried to do so in this budget. However, grant reimbursements of approximately $400,000 will completely fund the entire proposed police overtime budget. Also, grant reimbursements will fund over $150,000 in police and fire equipment and staffing needs without any impact on the general fund. Streets and storm drain funds that are state subventions will fund over $200,000 in staff time from the general tax without any charge to the general fund. Using debt to leverage the funds available for the 2010 voter-approved Measure H initiative will yield approximately $12 million to fund desperately needed capital projects for new facilities and equipment. Measure H initiative will also continue to fund $1 million in police and fire for benefits for the fiscal year 2013-14 budget. This year is the second year in a row we are presenting a truly balanced budget and one that does not rely on prior year fund balances. The fiscal year 2013-14 proposed budget also does not include a capital improvement plan. The Public Works Department is working on a capital improvement plan that will carry the city through the next five years with a strategy for identifying the funding needed for major infrastructure work in streets and water and sewer plant. This budget allows best practices and conservative projection methods. For example, the debt service funds, although referenced in the document, are not budgeted as operating expenditures, which they should not. Similarly, the community development districts, better known as CFDs, are not budgeted but may be referenced in the document. Typically, CFDs are funded by the residents and property owners within the district, and an annual engineering study is prepared to determine the assessment. Developer impact fees are also not budgeted in this, in this document, as it's very, very difficult to figure out and estimate. The diff, the development impact fees are restricted to fund areas that have a nexus to the project and will be used to mitigate the impact of development. Trust and agency funds, such as deferred compensation fund, are funds that are either passed through or are being held by the city on behalf of another party. The city's progress with salary and benefit reduction actions is encouraging. The furloughs agreed upon by the bargaining units last year are not enforced and reflected in this proposed budget, one of the major accomplishments that this council has been able to move forward. Money is still tight, and payroll is still almost 80% of the general fund budget. Budget costs, especially health plan, retirement, workman's comp, general liability, are rising at an alarming rate. These areas need to be addressed with bold action from the council so that the city can survive, let alone be healthy in the next coming years. Overall, a budget-cutting environment still exists. However, looking at the positives, it is also clear we are becoming more efficient. We anticipate the continuing evaluation of all city organization functions and services will be even more intense than in the past. We will be seeking guidance and direction from the council as we move forward in this area. Management is exploring potential new technology, including a new copier solution for the citywide use. Staff is working to find the equilibrium point where the appropriate amount of technology can be implemented to support anticipated services and existing staffing levels. The bigger challenge will be to find funds for these projects. We are exploring several options, including public-private partnerships, better known as the three Ps, grant funding, deferred payments, and leasing that takes advantage of the current interest rates in this environment. Planning for the future in times of uncertainty is not close to being desirable. However, we believe it does present some opportunities. There are alternatives that did not exist three to five years ago because vendors and suppliers have also had to be creative. There will continue to be more focus on economic development. The city must be able to react and be nimble in prospective development in the area. Economic development includes but are not limited to attractive medians, paved streets, clean sidewalks, tasteful signage, and, and building on our business community. Most of this can be done with priority given to infrastructure funding, a fresh look at permitting process, and a review and cleanup of our municipal code. We believe the council will actively support a review of the city's ability to deliver the high standards of service required to go along with stronger economic recovery. Staff training, review of existing services, and matching the residents, excuse me, needs are all areas that we want to evaluate during the next few years. The council has expressed in the past that it does not expect us just to preserve essential services, it wants us to be among the best in providing all services, which we are committed to. Even though the local economy is still stagnant and not generating much employment in Callexico, there are signs of better times. It appears that Grand Plaza Project is set for an opening in late October of this year, creating needed jobs while improving our sales tax and property tax base. A longer range plan for a casino is also in the works, and we hope to hear from the federal government on its status soon. In the industrial sector, a new industrial park has recently been completed with all the required infrastructure and is ready to move forward with the establishment of businesses and the creation of much-needed jobs. We are convinced growth will come, and we are poised to help in any way we can. Our organization has become smaller as we continue to shrink the staff numbers in order to survive and to continue to move forward towards a fiscal stability. Through volunteer separation programs and attrition, while not reducing our public safety personnel, which I think is very important, the City of Callexico staffing has been reduced by 27 employees during the last two years, helping to eliminate employee furloughs. As the city's books are being closed out at the end of this, at the end of August, the possibility of a slight general fund surplus exists. The positive to this is that the city remains in a reasonably safe financial position, but not one to assure long-term strength. The job is not complete, and the City Council and staff will have to be alert to changes from the outside and be proactive in seeking ways to continue the effort of cost savings and efficiencies in our operations. My appreciation goes to the City Council for their consideration and us putting this budget together. I realize that we are 90 days behind the eight ball, or 60 days behind the eight ball, but it was important that we take the time to produce a document that we feel meets all the needs. We are also, I also would like to thank all the department heads who were involved in the creation of this budget. It is very difficult to talk to department heads when year after year we're talking about maintaining the same cost, as we realize that service levels are still expected and also that cost of living increases are impacting our budgets. Even though they're not major, they still impact our budgets, so in reality, our department heads of management have done a great job in living within the same dollar amounts of past budgets. Special thanks goes out to the Finance Department for their assistance in the preparation of this balanced 2013-14 budget, as well as their finance director, John Quinn, who spent numerous hours assisting me in putting this budget together, and to all the city employees and the citizens of this great City of Callexico for their effort and hard work during these challenging times when resources are scarce. We must look forward and embrace the many challenges ahead. I know, together, we will succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Well said, written, and, yes, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, and to the television public, I want to apologize for such a bad start, but I feel like we're, we're better, we're going to move forward. So let's all take our turn in expressing our comments, and short amount of questions on the budget.
Mayor, if I may, there's just a couple of other notes I'd like to give you.
Go right ahead, City Manager.
Before we move forward.
Go right ahead.
Because they may answer some questions.
Okay.
This budget is a truly balanced budget. It does not take into account ending balances. And the best example I can give you is if you're trying to live within certain means, and you were trying to meet your expenses, and you sold your house to buy, to keep living, at some point in time, that money is going to run out. What we are trying to do in these, in these budgets is make sure that the revenue we're estimating that's coming in, we are living within those means, so that if we do have certain...
So that if we do have surpluses, and we do have some kind of a balance left in our general funds and so on, those can be used for one-time expenditures, such as equipment that we may need, that we don't need to continue to buy, and it's not an operations expense. We also, as we all know, we must be prepared for any kind of catastrophic event that may occur. And in this community, there are such things as earthquakes, there's such as major storms, there's such things as devaluation, which nobody else faces. So, we need to be prepared, and we need to have a reasonable surplus on hand so that we can deal with these situations. So again, the, the budget that we're presenting today lives within those means. Existing revenues that we're projecting to come in for the year will meet and actually exceed by a little bit the expected expenditures. How does that differ from a structural deficit? Well, a structural deficit, two years ago, we had approximately about a 2.5 million structural deficit. What that means is that we used other revenues to be able to balance the budget. If you recall, at the state level, they raided a bunch of funds in order to balance their budget, including our redevelopment agencies. That's one of the things that we want to stay away from. I, I have to be honest that we currently still have a structural deficit, and that is made up of Measure H funding. If it wasn't for Measure H, we would have a serious issue. Luckily, the voters did back us up, and those are going back into using it for services. And therefore, we receive approximately $1.3 million from Measure H through the funding of our public safety for $1 million, and roughly a quarter to $300,000 for SROs, which we provide to the school district. And then there was some increase in some revenue sections of our budget. They weren't major, but for example, the Grand Plaza has allowed us to increase our permitting more than what we had budgeted, so we have a little more money coming in from that, that came in from that, versus what we had budgeted. So, we are being able to tell you that today, our structural deficit, we've lowered that to somewhere in the area of about $1.2 million. Unfortunately, we had to deal with a couple of things in this budget that are not normal, and so we had to figure out how to be able to fund those. One, which we are very proud of, is the fact that everybody except for the police department are now off furloughs. We are able to pay our employees what they deserve, their full salaries. And so, we are able to obviously ask them to raise their productivity levels, which I think they are doing. And therefore, we are being able to try to maintain the, the service levels that we had before with less people. And so, I think, I think a, a thank you should go out to our, our employees, because with 27 less employees, we're still being able to meet the service levels at a basic level. So that is the difference between a structural deficit and a balanced budget. Hopefully, that'll answer some questions that some of you had. And to, to, before I go any further, we have to understand that this budget is not a static document, it's a fluid document. Just because you approve this today doesn't mean we can't change it tomorrow. We come to you with items that may not be in the budget, and therefore, when you approve those items, we adjust our budget. So again, this is not the last you hear about our budget, it's an ongoing document that continues to change based on the circumstances that we are facing. One of the other challenges that we had is that our workman's comp and our general liability premium for the coming year went up $600,000. Last year, we paid 1.5. So you can see that that was quite a challenge trying to figure out how we were going to fund this. This budget does fund it. And so, if you look at 600,000 on that particular item and another roughly 900,000 from furloughs, we were able to make up 1.5 million dollars with all our movements in our budget and still give you a balanced budget for this year. So we are very proud of that. The other thing that I think is important is to, again, identify and emphasize that we are dealing with 27 less employees. In a matter of two years, we have reduced our workforce by 27 employees, which did not impact our public safety. I thank the council, because that is the direction that they gave me two years ago, if you will recall. We do not want to lay off employees, which I think was a great decision, but we need to lower our, our staffing, because that's where our money is, and salaries and benefits. And so, we've been able to do that through attrition, and if you will recall, we put together probably three or four different volunteer separation programs, where we provided certain benefits to employees who were close to their retirement and decided to take us up and retire. Those positions were not filled. So we are trying to move forward with a balanced budget, with less employees, providing, getting rid of furloughs, and also taking care of the major hit we had to take on the comp and general liability. So I believe that this budget has been hard-worked. It's always tough to not be able to say we're going to start this great new program, but all of us read the paper, all of us watch the television, we all know that the economic times, the hard times are still above, are, are upon us. The people who sit on this council that are business people, they know. It, it is hard right now to operate businesses, it is hard to operate government. I realize that we're a government, and we're to provide certain services, but at the same token, we need to make sure that we also balance our books, because if we don't, as we have seen with some of our colleagues, there's nothing to say that we can't join the rolls of bankruptcy. And if we join the rolls of bankruptcy, we cannot service our employees and our citizens. So with that being said, we are open to questions about this budget. Again, it's a tough budget. I thank all the employees, I thank the council for being patient and giving direction on some of these things. They're not easy decisions, but we need to make them to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Oscar Rodriguez. Moving to Councilman Moreno, your turn, sir, to comment.
Yes, thank you. Real quick, first of all, I want to congratulate the finance department, Mr. Quinn and all your staff for putting together this excellent report, easy to read, very self-explanatory. What puzzles me, though, Mr. City Manager, is one of the paragraphs where we talk about the, the benefits and how they're rising at an alarming rate. I would hope to see that perhaps the city administration have a plan, and I think I brought this up before about the pensions and reform and stuff like that, to make sure that we don't fall by the wayside as other cities have. Do we have a plan to address that?
We are constantly looking at that. We, we don't want to see our salaries and benefits get up to the point where they're in the high 80s. One of the, one of the red flags that, if you look at some of the other cities that have gone, claimed bankruptcy, that has been one of the biggest issues, and that is their pension packages. And when their pension packages go above, go into the high 80s, that's when we've seen them default, because you're getting too high into the amount of money that's going out just on salaries and benefits, and that also impacts your cash flows. If you're having to pay out this kind of money every month, that means you have to receive that money every month. And as governments go, our two major sources, property taxes are collected twice a year, and so they only come in certain times out of the year, and so you have to make sure that you're not spending more than the money that's going to come in, because it only comes in twice a year. The other thing with sales tax, yes, it does come in on a monthly basis, but you usually get two estimates, and then you get your cleanup on your, on your third month for the quarter. So you never, you're never really quite sure where you're at as far as your cleanup, so again, you cannot be riding high on, on your, on your salaries and benefits having to be paid out every month at too high of a level, because then your cash flow may not come in. Then you go into what's called anticipation notes, and, and once you get into anticipation notes, that's, that's another red flag that goes up. And anticipation notes are basically, you're borrow against, you're borrowing and anticipating against the money that's going to be coming in. We never want to get in that position, and so we are constantly reviewing our pensions and where we're at and our benefit structures. As you know, we are self-insured, so it takes even more review, because we don't just go to Blue Cross and say, okay, what's the cost going to be this year? We actually manage our own, we pay our own, we are our own insurance company. So we constantly have to be looking at people who insure us, because under our insurance plan, there's what's called a specific loss, and then there's an aggregate loss. And your specific loss is we insure every employee up to a certain amount, and if it goes over that, then an insurance company covers us. We also have what's called the aggregate or the umbrella coverage, which means we have, this coming year, we have, I think, $2.1 million that says if the organization as a whole, their medical plan expenses go over $2.1 million, then we have an insurance company that covers us for that. Okay, we used to have Lloyds of London, we cannot afford them anymore, so we went out into the market and got somebody else, but they're just as good, and they're, we were able to save some money. So it's a constant battle, and we know we constantly have to review it, we constantly review our monthly reports to see where we're at, and so yes, the short answer is we, we have to keep on top of it, we have to review this on a monthly basis, this is not something we review every year, we have to constantly review that and make sure that our benefit structure is within a reasonable range so that we can continue forward in the future.
Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager. My three minutes are up, Mr. Mayor, but I would hope to see that this is on the forefront of, of every decision made by state administration regarding the budget, that pension, pension, salaries, and benefits is, is always the key issue to stabilizing any business. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Moreno. Excellent concerns. We agree with you. Moving to my left, Councilwoman Hurtado.
I believe that what I would like to add to this conversation is the impressive changes that our budget presentation has, has. In viewing the past budgets that I've worked with from a couple of years back, I remember that the reports that we looked at were reports that were generated directly from our MOM program that our finance department handles, and they were teeny-tiny words and just very complex to follow, and, and you had to find places here and to answer questions over there, and, and the manner in which this presentation has been set up is, is very different. However, it's much more, not only appealing to the eye with colors and graphs and just something that's just more comfortable to read, it's also organized differently, and I very much appreciate that. I made those comments to you, Mr. Quinn, yesterday in our review, that I do appreciate when someone like myself that looks at this stuff every day, the manner in which that you have set this up is a huge improvement to what we had before. So I commend you and your staff for having had the vision of made these changes that are so important to people who want to take this, and, and just by saying that you added a glossary for those that take this book independently and want to understand any of the terminology, that was, that was really good. And so, this document in itself can be independent, and somebody could take that and have certain knowledge in bookkeeping and just be able to understand it much more, so that was great. The other thing that I also have recognized and appreciate is in eliminating a lot of the unnecessary budget categories that drive bookkeepers, accountants, and stuff nuts. So that was great, and I think that that just basically will allow for this document to become much more precise, much more appropriate, easier to read, and take care of the job that it needs to do, which is to inform our departments in our city what our budget is in, in a user-friendly manner, so I just wanted to add that. And thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hurtado, and I totally agree. So thank you very much, Mr. Quinn and all the staff. Moving on, Councilman Castro.
Yes, I have a question on item number three.
Three. Item number three, or section.
Sorry?
What page?
Let me, let me.
Okay.
I believe three or.
He's talking about the tabs.
Is item number, number three?
Tab number three.
Page 19.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm reading this, this position control list in, on, on the adopted budget on fiscal year 2012, 2013, on the item of police officers. There is only 31 police officers, right, on 2012, 2013, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and also, in the same, when the second column, proposed budget 2013, 2014, we're talking about the same police officers?
That's correct.
Right? Until today or for the next proposed, next proposed budget? There any, I haven't seen any changes. I mean, with this, if we approve this budget, my, my question is, are we are going to continue with the same police officers? That's my question, because.
We've had a discussion, the chief and I, and some other, some of you in fact, and our proposal, which I am supposed to receive here shortly, I just talked to the chief before coming in here, and he is going to provide me a document on a justification which we will be utilizing to go to Measure H, and we are going to request funding for a sergeant and for officers. We will be going to them, I believe they meet the third Monday, so I believe it's next Monday, I believe, no, I'm sorry, the week after that. So we're going to be asking for five additional officers from them.
So the, the option is Measure H?
That is correct.
For that issue, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and also in, in the same page, with the fire department, on, for the fire department, in the 2012 was 12 firefighters, paramedics, right, 12?
That's correct.
And for the 2013 to 14, is, is going to be the same paramedics, firefighters?
That is correct.
That's, is, so we're talking about the same from the last year, right?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, and if I may.
And also, the same question for that, for that.
Okay, and, and that is a little different in the sense that at the fire department, if you recall, we had three shifts, and, I don't see the chief here, but we had three shifts, and every shift, if you recall, we were paying a lot of money on overtime in the past, and we, the council allowed us to go after a safer grant, where we ended up getting four firefighters. They are now on board, and that allowed us to go to 10, 10 firefighters per shift, so that's 30 firefighters. And, and you have 31, because I believe you have the, the fire inspectors, or I believe that's what it is, but anyway, you have 10 per shift, and the minimum mandatory requirement is eight. So we have two more than the mandatory requirement. So what that has done is that it has assisted us, because in the past, if somebody needed to take vacation, or they're out ill, then there was two shifts with eight, so we needed to call somebody in on overtime, and there was actually one shift with seven, if you will recall, and so that shift always had overtime. And so by doing this, we have more than the minimum required, which is eight, and so if somebody calls in sick, or if somebody needs to take vacation, we are able to let them off and not have a problem with our minimum requirement, which is what we need to run our station.
Okay, so this is all about 2013 through 2014 proposed budget, right?
That's correct.
Okay, how come the, the budget 2012, 2011, 2012 is not done until today? It's, it's only a question.
This is your 13-14 budget.
Yes, but I, I understand that, but why? How come we don't receive that 2011-2012 budget until today?
We don't have the 2011-2012, that was approved a long time ago.
Yes, we don't have it?
We approved it already.
You approved that two years ago.
Well, I believe, okay, this is, I'm sorry, this is 20, no, 2012-2013, I'm talking about 2012-2013. No, I'm sorry, 20, I'm confused. No, I'm sorry, 20, I'm confused. It's 2011, 2012. We already approved that?
Oh, yes, definitely. We've already been through the year. Yes, we approved both of those, 2011, 12, 2012, 13.
Okay, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Castro, and I appreciate your concerns about the police department. That's something that we have discussed. And, and again, just to reiterate, this is a working budget, right?
That is correct.
So if good times come, and I have faith.
Hopefully, we'll be able.
We can add more people. Okay, let me state my, real quick, timing. I have asked the critical questions in the briefings, so I'm satisfied with the answers. I accept this present budget, it's not perfect, but again, among my fellow councilmen, the comments about how simplified but yet accurate it is, I want, I want to thank you for such a great job. It was a little too late for me in my concerns, in one concern that I had, and so my concern that I'm going to state right now, I'm, I'm going to look forward that we maybe do it for the upcoming year, and that is find a way, a mechanism, a way, a forum throughout the year as we are moving on our next budget, to have some public input, public workshops. I really strongly believe that, that the public should have more input. So that's something that I, I would like to see as we move forward. I am concerned, you know, it saddens me, it was a necessity, but it saddens me when, when we say we, we've eliminated or we're lower in staff by 27. Those are human beings that, that need incomes and have families to feed. I really hope that we can keep this budget without having to have any more cuts in positions. I, I feel like we're close to the bone, and if we, we cut more people, then I think we're going to undermine the quality in productivity and service. So I'm concerned about that, but that's a concern that can be talked about in briefings.
And we always, obviously, are very concerned about that, because we can only increase productivity levels so much. So yes, I will agree with you that we are getting very close to the bone here. I mean, and I know everybody says that all the time, but we are getting there. And the, the next section that we will be looking at, and one of the comments that I guess I should make is that anytime we talk about reorganization, that's an ongoing process. And so the next process in our review of the organization is to look at the management team. We have cut 27 people at the staff level, so we need to look how that shapes up for the management of those people with less people on board.
And another issue, I don't want to get into it, but I just want to mention, concerned about quality control. I would like to be taught and, and see a plan or be explained about how we actually hold all, all ranks in our, in our city accountable, even up to the supervisors. You don't have to answer, that's something I'm concerned about now. You, you talk about organization. In housing, I think, City Manager, you ought to, you ought to look at Mrs. Navas' position and, and consider allowing her to have more training and expanding, so that hopefully she can maybe take on a directorship and, and oversee that. I, I feel that she's overwhelmed in that area, and so I think that would be a good direction. This is a working budget. I want to thank City Manager, I think you've done a, an exceptional job, Oscar.
Thank you.
You're not perfect. We have criticisms about you, but overall.
They will always be there, believe me.
I can't believe how smart you are. Did you go to school for this?
USC, Terrero.
And I want to thank Mr. Quinn, you are, I, I think that you are a valuable welcome to the staff and, and with this budget, and everybody, Mr. Savin, all the department people. May I say in a crude way, I know you work your asses off, and we appreciate it, we all do, and we, we want to see you to continue working and, and moving and prospering in your, in your place of employment and your personal lives. And I also want to thank my city council members. You know, we have our differences, but I think each and every one of us here have done a tremendous job, together and individually. I do appreciate Councilman Kim's research expertise and his criticism about areas. I appreciate Councilman Castro's concerns. I appreciate Councilwoman Hurtado in the way she approaches things, and certainly Councilman Moreno. I, I, each and every one of you, I respect you. And so I would like to make a motion to approve this, this budget.
I second that motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second that motion.
Okay, all right then, please vote.
My vote going to be no. I like to implement thing at the minute. To no reason by, I cannot see factor or not.
Mr. Castro here.
Without 12, 13 budget report, by 3.5 minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, the vote is three to two, it does pass. Thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I, I have a question?
Meeting's adjourned.
Well, he can ask.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you didn't take, you passed the, the resolution that was on your desk, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure.
Yeah, we did.
This is the update.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.